Please.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 All right. And I would like a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I will make that motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, so now we're going to move to item two, which is the board reorganization. And this is an annual reorganization meeting on or within 30 days after the fourth Monday in April. We are well into that timeframe, so we will be calling for nominations for each office this evening. So we're going to start with A, the President. So I'm looking for a motion for a nomination for the Board President.
I'd like to make a nomination for Deb Olson as our Board President.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 All right. And we'll be moving on to the Vice President position. I'm looking for a motion to nominate a name for Vice President, please.
I'd like to nominate Kate McKinnney.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Phil Johnson?
Yes.
McKinnney?
Yes.
Yes.
Deb Olson?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
All right. And we're moving on to the Clerk position. Like a motion to nominate for the Clerk position, please. I'd like to nominate Paul Johnson. In a second.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Roll call vote, please.
Can I give that to Mel?
Yes.
Phil Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Nathaniel Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Martha Scherz?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
All right. And the final one is for the Treasurer. So I'm looking for a nomination for the Treasurer. I would like to nominate Marsha Scherz.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right. So Kate and Nathaniel, if you would switch spots, please, because you will be taking over immediately. And thank you, everyone, for the positions that you have held and the positions that you continue to hold. And I appreciate everybody's confidence in nominating me for this position again this year. Thank you. Thank you, Nathaniel. All right. And we're going to be moving on now to the presentation portion of our meeting. And item A is students, staff, and community recognition. We have quite a few this evening. The first ones I'd like to call up are Erin and Paige. They are being nominated by Principal Dennis Scherz. And Mr. Scherz, if you would come up as well. Erin and Paige have both been very willing in developing and leading staff development opportunities. They continue to investigate and initiate best practice. They are always willing to go above and beyond expectations in their classrooms and amongst their peers. Erin and Paige are great examples of what it means to serve Spooner School students. Have a round of applause, please. All right. Congratulations. All right. The next up is Ashley. Okay, we'll go back to her. Okay. All right. So we're going to call up Ava, Michaela, and is it Riley? 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 Okay. If you ladies would like to step, Ms. Geisregan. These three are being recognized for the Wow Wall. Three seventh-grade students have been working hard to spread positivity, inspire others to express their creativity, and showcase the incredible talents of Spooner Middle School students. Ava, Michaela, and Riley created a wall specifically for students to work they're proud of, to share with students, staff, and visitors. The inspiration came from an idea that Riley had last summer to hang artwork and inspiring quotes around the school when we returned after the long building closure. When she came back to school, she enlisted the support of Ava and Michaela. Between the three students, they ran with the idea and made it happen. So congratulations, ladies. Round of applause, please. Okay. Congratulations, ladies. Oh, she's back. Okay. All right. Next one is Ashley Velelo. Will you please step forward with Ms. Geisregan? Okay. Ashley has been instrumental in assisting with student mental health concerns, obtaining and coordinating community resources to meet students' needs, and assisting parents in accessing and utilizing school and community resources. In addition, this year she is teaching fifth and sixth grade health. Ashley's work ethic and involvement with students is admirable. We are truly lucky to have someone as dedicated as her at S M S. So congratulations, Ashley. Round of applause, please. All right. And next up is Brittany Gormong and Mr. Hopke. Could you please step forward? Okay. Brittany is completing her second year as a special education teacher at S E S, but has already had a profound impact on student learning and building operations. She has assisted with staffing issues when paraprofessional positions are vacant. For the day, she has worked with general education teachers collaboratively to develop instruction for struggling students, and she has worked tirelessly to develop and implement effective behavior plans for students with behavioral needs. She is passionate about her work and is truly a vital team member of S E S. So congratulations. All right. And next, Colin Carlton. Mr. Hopke, you can stay put there. All right. Colin has been an influential member of our learning team at S E S. He played an important role in developing and implementing virtual learning for our 4K second-grade students. He mentored other teachers with the virtual learning platforms. He problem-solved issues with the platform, and he led discussions on ways to incorporate digital resources in learning. He has also led his team with identifying social studies essential standards and unpacking those standards. Lastly, he took on the role of P B I S Tier Two coach in order to address student behaviors. He is truly a team player and is dedicated to the staff and students at S E S. Congratulations. Okay. And lastly, we have the Washburn County Lakes and Rivers Association. Not here? Okay. All right, I'm going to read the information anyway. Washburn County Lakes and Rivers Association, led by Craig Walke, supported learning at S E S by organizing the delivery of traveling display called Great Lakes Small Streams, "A Water Shapes Wisconsin" from the Wisconsin Historical Society. This display was set up in the front hallway of S E S for students to view and classes to use for learning more about... Sure. Biomes? Okay. The display was in place for the entire month of April. So thank you very much for that. And a round of applause, please. All right. So now we're going to move to item B, update from the district nurse, Sarah Hamilton. Is there any questions for Ms. Hamilton regarding any of the numbers or any of the exclusions or anything this evening? No? Okay. All right. So then we will receive and place that information on file. All right. And item C, update on the referendum project, Mr. Kunkel.
Good evening. So just going to provide an update on what we've been doing on the last month. Starting to really ramp up with construction, starting about a month and a half from now. So a majority of the contracts have been executed. We've met with city officials, and permit applications will be submitted for the three facilities tomorrow. We will also be reaching out to the county as well, just to make sure they don't have any concerns. C S and the admin team have increased the amount of project meetings to weekly. Contractors are beginning to store their materials on site. We are working on receiving proposals for a few more scopes of work. Contractor meetings have been scheduled. These include a project schedule meeting as well as a general pre-construction meeting. Off is working on a revised bus route at the elementary school so we can eliminate the need to back up buses. And then Off will also be on site this week to field verify potential I Q upgrades I believe you'll be having a presentation on soon. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Brad? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much for the update, and we will receive and place that information on file. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item D, discuss the late acceptance of Start College Now applications. Mrs. Myers?
You'll remember that March 1st and October 1st are deadlines for Start College Now and early college credit applications. The two requests that you have before you were not submitted in time for that March 1st deadline. The one became a conversation about wanting to take Sign Language, and so we were talking about it and looking ahead to the spring semester. There isn't... This is through our partnership with C S A 10. There isn't a Sign Language One in the spring semester. It's only in the fall. So then this student would have to wait till the following fall in order to do Sign Language One and then Sign Language Two. So they have asked that we, you know, apply to accept that. I have talked to both of the colleges, and they are willing to... This deadline is really a state deadline. It's not really the college deadline or... So they've said absolutely, "You guys will approve it."
Okay. Okay. So they have room and they're willing to, when we move this to consensus, to move to the regular board meeting, they're willing to wait till that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there any questions for Mrs. Myers regarding either of these students or either of the classes they applied for? Okay. All right. Then, thank you. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Great. All right. So now we're going to move on to item E, is discuss the 2021-2022 board meeting dates. Okay, so I believe Caitlin has gone through and has did a summary of the meeting dates. Same time, the Cal meeting would meet at 5:30 on the first Monday, and the regular board meeting would be the third Monday, right? Third Monday at 6:00 P. M. I believe she stayed away from any federal holidays or if there was anything conflicting. Is that correct? Okay. As far as concerts or anything happening in the community or things like that. So do we have any questions regarding any of the dates? And I see July is the second and third Monday, correct? Okay, because of the July 5th holiday. Same with September. Okay. So there would be two meeting months that we would meet consecutively on Mondays. So, you know, keep that in mind if there was anything that we were going to be discussing or doing that you would have any questions on, that you would act, you know, a little more quickly than normal if you had any questions regarding those. Yes, Caitlin? Okay. Okay. So February is also one because of President's Day. So there's three, February, July, and September, correct? Okay. So is there any questions regarding the calendar or tentative calendar? Okay. Do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. And we're going to move on to item F, discuss volume 30, number one of the Niola policy updates. Again, there was a mountain of information in these new policies and updated policies that we were sent, and I believe this is the normal section of policies that we do every year and that we do on the update. So is there any questions at this point regarding any of those policies or anything that you have questions on in any of those?
Yes, I have one. And I don't know if I... There was one about, I think it had to do with the library and parents being able to come in and look at certain materials of their students, but it was under 16. My concern is if they're a student and they're considered a minor or have parents, that that should be any student, not just under 16 years of age. Now, I thought I wrote down the right policy, and it looks like I may not have.
That's all right.
It's policy 2522, if I understand this correctly. Parents of a student under the age of 16 have the right to review upon request. Library instruction, material center.
Okay.
So as a parent, I would like that to be that aged, to be moved to 18 or whatever, as long as they're not an independent, on their own student.
Can we look at that through Niola, or how does that?
Yeah. We'll, you know, what we'll do with this, provided the board comes to consensus to move these forward for a first reading, is we'll make that...
Notation?
We'll make that notation on that policy for the meeting in a couple of weeks.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so can we get that checked out?
We will have some more information, and we will bring that to the regular meeting.
Okay. So do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting with receiving that additional information regarding policy 2512, I believe it is?
2522.
2522. Thank you, Nathaniel.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, is there any other questions? Sorry. All right. All right. So then we're going to move on to discussing the elementary and secondary school education relief two and three proposed allocations. Dr. Eisen is going to be giving that presentation.
Sure. Yeah. We don't want to look at you, sorry. Oh, Nathaniel.
I'm sitting here, my eyes are watering. It wasn't because I was deeply moved either.
Who doesn't have more fun than we do?
I will ask permission. I'm not in disguise.
Thank you for being flexible in your speaking. So I'm going to present some patients on three various schools. So just patient on funds, really two funds that we are taking a look at last month, looking at coming. Just know that there is an ASR two that will address, ASR three that's been moved at the federal level. We'll wait for more. The other is a fund that we were... That's the other one. Governor... Purchase large volume of home books. So we talked a little bit about ASR one. It is one of the build all you buy type of projects through legislative federal money that'll... It's really working on, but... Work in progress. Know that our application for reimbursement, the reimbursement program will be done through the D P I wise forwarding, doctor, and... For sure. Purchase. Forwarded. Allowable cost for restructuring from the program. The intent is helping educational organizations best... Proud to... And you'll see more about guidance organized around... Well, the challenges with ASR right now, have to get an upper down answer decision on do this. It is saying the program types of those programs. Just know that as we look at ASR two funds, we'll be... We'll look at this evening. Those funds, and the opportunity for reimbursement. Three. Three funds are ready. So that those will be... Next page, this is a program that authorized reimbursement. Preparation. Pressing... Other schools and... Still at all. Educating... If the pool of purchase home books. Outreach and delivery. Pressing school. Very fortunate. Program. Mental health services first. So as we look at ASR two, districts are required to... At this point, we believe that we will have a recommendation from just... Thousands of dollars. Evening. So the first section, recommendations for certified staff, position that we... Place for this company. Please know that any of these firing would be temporarily... Position that would be... For the first position, our learning supports. That was... Basically, work. The building book. Their assignment would be focus. Targeting those students. Learning. Additional. The next set of positions I would recommend are full-time substitute teachers, hot-line substitute also. We would look at who of those teachers... Really, it's focused on ability. I think that Ed talked about... Was open the lights on to students. So we're confident that we have subs that are on full-time status and are... It is assigned where they go that one... They'd be attracted. Offered. They don't know if working... They'll... Tell them, oh, that's really significant. Okay. We're also looking at teen support specialists. If you back down, February of 2020, having a position, they were calling... So at that point, we just, we're unclear enough about the budget going forward, that we just... Who would have seen COVID come? Conversation. How we know that, know that that need can be there. We also know that there's... Health first, out there, women as well. So support specialists would differ from behavior support specialists. Call back, we really talk about psychologists. Difference. Difference.
I do have one question. The student support specialist, then those positions, they would be working with the students directly or with the, with the teachers that those students are, classes are in?
Yes, both.
Okay.
Really based on the situation. Heard of it.
This is limited, just short term.
That's correct.
You, but you've got it under assurant two, do you consider, would you consider extending it to the end of 23 in the event, once those funds are?
I, I think for any of these positions, as they're new, we would put them into place and evaluate them. Certainly the continuation under assurant would be a consideration of our plan. Taking a classifieds, changes that we want, all, really putting a focus on, on the health side of it, that's, that is a area program, wise, content would be to have full-time health, operate, really, so, in order to do that, we would have to hire an additional employee. Would also have.
So, the, oh, I'm sorry, I have, so the increased time and benefit health aides, that would be giving those that are working part-time right now, giving them those benefits and putting them full-time, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then it would be one additional besides who we already have?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other assurant two recommended, as Brad Conklin indicated, we would ask the board to consider some updates to the heating ventilation. Really done with the focus on students, staff, and. Edition, construction taking place in buildings, focused on, would make this cost-wise. Those, that work would really focus on, the first would be increasing the, filtering that out, we would look to upgrade the filter, your hand, thank you, which has air. And we would look to bring that filter to hospital. Also look at all the bipolar, some of those, with the bipolar planification system, it needs the filtering, that's, both the air and the other means. Mission, you know, the science behind this is quite solid, they're alternative, individual, Lastly, sealing the ductwork, work feeling could take place in middle school, work, because if you know highly, highly filtered air, doesn't, doesn't. Lastly, curriculum resource materials, which are, crazy, special arts, social studies, resource materials, unable. Take all, look at, look at board, food, mission, materials. Bishop, yes. Question?
The only question I have is, if we do the upgrades to the HVACU units and the ductwork and all that, do we, is there going to be a significant amount of additional maintenance going through that or is it just be in with our regular maintenance that we do with everything?
Good question, so, so that would just fall into our, our regular maintenance routine. We already filter, for air handling, it would be, quality or the level of filtering, probably some cost involved, but we're confident, would be, would be able to.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any other additional questions for Dr. Aslan? Okay, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. And always know if there's additional questions after tonight's meeting, that you can certainly get in touch with Dr. Aslan and he will be able to answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to move on to item H, discuss the appointment of the Title IX Coordinator. You're up again, I believe, right?
Yes, so, district has two Title IX Coordinator positions. We typically have one male and one female in order to best support complaints that would bring Title IX claims for Mrs. Grindell's departure leaves a shortage of one of those and so, bring a recommendation to you that, that Ms. Geisreag can be appointed to that Title IX Coordinator.
Is there any questions? Okay, do we have consensus to move that forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. And we're going to discuss, the next item is item I, discuss the 2021, 2022 open enrollment application.
I, yeah, I just, we, statutorily, we've hit the deadline for early enrollment application for any reason other than special circumstance. I, I would say, one item that's different this year is, in previous years, families could only apply to one online school and, and that has been dropped. So, families are able to apply to many online schools as they would care to. So, you'll see in the open enrollment out requests that have a number of students that have multiple applications, districts and just the annual caution that I give you is the, if a family applies and is approved, we really don't know what will happen until we do that third Friday count in September, whether they would actually exercise that, that option.
Okay. All right, is there any other additional questions regarding that? Okay, then, we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. And then, item J is discuss the student handbook updates. So, each of you had an opportunity to look over those updates to the handbook and is there any questions regarding that or any of those updates to any of those building? No questions for any of the building administrators at all? Okay. So then, I would ask consensus to move this to the regular board meeting for the first reading.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then, we're going, moving on to item K, appoint a board delegate to attend the CISA 11 annual meeting on Monday, June 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Do I have a volunteer? Don't everyone just jump at once? It is being held at the night of our regular June Cow meeting as well. They don't know at this time if it will be in-person or virtual, so I don't know if that changes anybody's mind at all.
I can do.
I can, yeah, I'll do either one.
Okay, so either Michelle or Marcia, which, Michelle?
It's up to you, Marcia, you said it first. I just will do it because it's the same night, I don't have to work then.
Yeah, because you, that's your issue is because you work on the Mondays that we don't have meetings, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But since it's the same night, I can do it.
Okay.
Michelle.
Okay, how about if, Michelle, you volunteer and if something comes up and you cannot, if you would get in touch with Marcia?
I can do that.
Then the two of you could work that out and that would be fabulous. Thank you very much for that, ladies. All right. Moving on to item L, the 30, 60, 90 day planning cycle. I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to go over that information as well. Again, thank you administrators for putting all that stuff together. It's nice to be able to just scroll through by school, by office and just see what's happening in, you know, 30, 60, 90 days. So, is there any questions regarding that? All right, we're going to receive and place that on file then. All right. All right, so we're moving on to item M, which is the financial update. Dr. Aslan?
So, an unfamiliar face giving this update now with Mrs. Grindell's departure. So, you know, she was always careful to note, we were two months behind on these, so looking at the month of March 2021, we had a beginning checking account balance of $6,783,021.57. Total income for the month, 1.1 million 538,953.51. Total expenditures for the month were $2,6,172.95. Cash on hand as of the end of March, $6,315,802.13.
Is there any question? Okay, consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So then we're going to move on to item N, approval of the vouchers. So, has everybody looked over that? Is there any questions regarding those? Okay, and just know that if there is any questions regarding those, because it is time sensitive, we would like to have a consensus to move it to part of the consent agenda, but if there's questions that we would get those answered, but we don't want to delay that. So we'd like that to move forward, but if you had questions, Dr. Aslan would get those answered for you. So, in this case, there are no questions, so do I have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. And then, we're moving on to item four, convenant closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent C, to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. I'd like a motion to convene into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Second, okay. Roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Yes.
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 Okay, we are back into open session. Mr. Johnson, can we have Rebecca of the action taken?
During the closed session, we approved the restructuring, the director of operation assignments and curriculum and instruction additional duty assignments, and we are posting a halftime receptionist position.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.